Sixteenth Street to Nineteenth Street have been completed. Water is in, gas is in, concrete is in, so it'll be paved on Monday. Start the paving on Monday. I think I heard somebody clap, that doesn't usually happen. Thank you. So, once they finish with Sixth Ave., we're gonna move on to Seventh Ave. and Eighth Ave. And get that done. We expect Seventh and Eighth Ave. to be completed, including the concrete, by midweek of next week. Then, from there, comes the bad news. The 1500 block of Sixth Ave., National Grid has not completed the service work there yet to connect the mains to the homes. They run into a lot of problems because of what's under the ground there. And I'll be meeting with them tomorrow and see how much longer they feel it will take. The hope is that they will be done with that next week, and as soon as we finish paving the other sections of Sixth, Seventh, and Eighth, we can pop right back up the next week and finish the 1500 block of Sixth Ave. and be done and have the city back in order. So, it has been a long process, especially for those living on Sixth, Seventh, and Eighth Ave. Thank you for your patience. And for those of you that are aware, the water work was being done by the end of next week, you should have newly paved roads. Again, thank you for your patience for that.
Live on Sixteenth Street?
We're not doing anything with Sixteenth Street, but their restoration where they're completed has been done, and then they're restoring moving forward. I don't believe that they'll do anything in the boulevards until the spring, unless we can find a way to get some hydro seed down before the winter, but I have high expectations for what's going to be done on those boulevards, so I don't know that November would be the best time to get some new soil down and some hydro seed.
Will Sixteenth Street be paved?
Sixteenth Street will not be paved in total, no.
It is, it's worth it.
It's an absolute mess.
So, you're going from the 1500 to Sixth Ave., and you're gonna come straight across over to the next block? You're gonna do that whole intersection, or just the...
All the way from Fifteenth Street to Nineteenth Street on Sixth Ave. is paved straight through.
Okay.
Yeah, so that intersection will be paved. There's a lot of work that was done there, yes. But Sixteenth Street itself is not scheduled to be paved this year. National Grid doesn't pave curb to curb, they just do trench. But what we're looking to do is pave that within the next year or so with our chips and money.
Now, when you say trench, did they concrete that too?
Yes.
Did you?
Yes. They began concreting it with dry concrete, as they've used in other areas, and told them they weren't allowed to do that, they had to use wet concrete. The dry concrete is not acceptable. And they've been informed that if anything happens with that, where they put dry concrete, if it dips, where it did in other areas of the city, that they'll have to come back and fix it. And that's, National Grid has informed the contractor, that contractor discretion is used to dry concrete.
So Sixth Ave. is ready to be paved from Sixteenth Street to Nineteenth Street?
Yes.
Okay, question?
Yes.
Manhole, concrete around the manhole, how's that gonna be addressed? They gonna butt up to the concrete, they gonna remove the concrete, or are you gonna go over the concrete?
No, they come in with a smaller miller around each one of those and on the curbs. They did that up on Broadway as well and on First and Second.
We'll see, we'll see.
Yeah, so they fill out around it, all the way around the manhole itself, and then they come in and...
Will you be watching it?
I'll be watching. I'll pay attention.
And all that I have. Make sure the gas works on before you break out the cigar.
Okay, old business?
In Old Business, we have Local Law Number Six for the year 2018, a local law to amend Chapter 230, Sewers of the Code of the City of Waterfleet Regarding Establishing and Imposing Sewer Rents for the period of November 1st, 2018 to October 31st, 2019.
Do you need resolutions?
We can vote on any ideas.
And this was the...
Sewer.
The sewer for four percent.
Four percent?
So, a little background, so this local law was proposed, and a public hearing took place at the last meeting. This specific law is for the sewer rents. This charges all vacant properties with the water shut off at the curb box the full rate, and in the total budget for this, the meter and flat rate each increase four percent. So, previously, the amount for flat was 182.85, $182.85. This increases the rate to $190.16, that's a four percent.
And this is also charging for full rate?
For vacant properties with the water shut off at the curb box.
Vacant properties? What about vacant units?
This local law does not address vacant units.
What are we going to do to address vacant areas of a home?
I believe that is the question.
I think it has to be looked at. If I can vote on... See, this is if the whole unit is vacant, the whole house is vacant?
The whole, yes, the whole property is vacant. There's nobody living on the property, on the Marston.
So what you're... What you're discussing right now is what was discussed at the public hearing, which was tabled because you were going to change it.
So, it wasn't tabled because that was just a public hearing, there wasn't a vote on it.
But it was on the docket after that minute?
Yeah, it shows up here, here to go.
But yet, Resolution 9545 is putting it in the paper to say that you can have a public hearing.
Well, we're going in this order, that's a caveat.
That's a justic case, right? You could vote it?
We could vote on it right now.
If the council votes on it now and approves it, then we do not have to have another public hearing with a new law. But the law would have to be changed, and the council would have to determine how they would like that law to be changed. So they kinda have to make a determination on this one before we can move forward.
So the document that you were discussing is the last pump in, is the exact same document that we're gonna propose?
That is being addressed right now, yes.
So the only thing is lacking is addressing units.
Correct. And there is...
How is that possible? If you have just a unit, and...
We're saying it's not addressed right now. TVP. Right now, it's not in there. Unless we assume that it's covering anything.
Correct.
What it specifically says, shut off at the curb.
So you're shutting everything off with the curb, but you're gonna still charge them $190?
Yeah.
No, for the sewers?
Yeah, so the water gets shut off at the curb box, but they're still being charged full sewer rate, yes.
But there's nothing to flush, there's all water.
Sewer's not just what you flush.
No, not at all.
So if you vote, if you move on it now, then it doesn't cover it?
It currently does not, no. So either the set of policies can be done to speak about vacant units, or it can be amended and can be moved out to having a public hearing.
And vacant buildings are in this law?
Vacant buildings are, yes.
The one that you're discussing at this moment?
Vacant units, yes, yes.
Vacant houses or other vacant buildings? What's the difference?
If it's not a house, it's a business, it's a...
Isn't that a building?
It would be a building. It says houses and buildings, could you just say buildings?
But you're saying that's not in this. Why do you keep saying that's not part of the bill?
A vacant unit, so if you have two families...
Are you talking about an apartment?
Correct.
I got it. Apartment.
Mayor, I'm looking that we pull this off on the public hearing.
And we can do that, but we'd have to have a handable document that states what the public hearing will be for. So we'd have to have any changes to this, or, and have that prepared to be able to say that for the public hearing.
Does that have to be at this point in time?
Yes.
To have it announced in the public hearing?
When we have that resolution, we should have, and, you know, we've drafted resolutions, you know, while we sit here. Could do the same and have it prepared tomorrow and be able to distribute to the public.
So it's really just a starting point?
Right.
I think sewer should be called, or involved.
In its hand?
Sewer.
Sewer.
Water.
What would be the resolution after that?
The sewers, the infrastructure. I'm sorry. I always recommended that sewer be charged full, whether it's a vacant unit or a vacant building. That's my position.
What's your opinion on the water bill, the bill?
Well, we're gonna get to that next. I think that should be happened, but not to steal the funding. Alls we're doing now is getting something that's the baseline for the public hearing, it's not what we're gonna do. So, we gotta start somewhere. Right now, it doesn't address units. So we could pass it right now and somehow handle units, but we might as well bring it back to the floor.
Just to clarify, this does not have an effect on anybody until the May billing comes out. So this is the timeframe from November 1st today until April 30th. The bill that you receive in May of 2019 was when this would be effective, so it does not affect the bill that goes out next week.
So people that are currently being charged for water, except for their unit, it would be now charged?
No.
According to what the mayor just proposed, yes. Not based on this local law that is on here.
This is just for the whole vacant building?
No, no, they're talking about the units now, too.
Units.
If you are a two-family, you don't run out of water flat?
We're getting charged.
What's the process to change your two-family into a one-family unit?
Yeah, excuse me, excuse me, everyone, just so we could just have, and I apologize for interrupting your question, just so we can have just a semblance of order and procedure to our council meetings, just so we understand what's going on. And I hate to be redundant, but right now, we have Old Business, so there's a local law that is previously in an ordinance that has previously been introduced, and there was a public hearing on it for individuals to come to the council meeting and have their voice be heard regarding that. That wasn't passed, it wasn't denied, it wasn't acted upon. So right now, it's still on the agenda for Old Business to either be passed, or denied, or withdrawn. If it's passed, then it's passed. If it's not passed, it's not passed, and it fails. If there is a different local law or ordinance with different words on it that needs to be introduced, then the council would direct us to draft a new local law and a new ordinance. So the process starts all over again. So essentially, what I guess we are waiting for is direction to determine whether or not we're going to introduce for the council's consideration a new local law and a new ordinance with different language on there that may address the topics that we're talking about. Does everybody understand that? So I understand that there are questions from the floor, and, you know, certainly that's welcome, but, you know, there is a public hearing, there's a process, and I'm, I don't want to use the word curtail, but, you know, we could be here and address questions and questions and questions, but I think that we need to know which direction we're gonna go, and then we'll have the process again to have a public hearing if that's what is needed, if that makes any sense. And then certainly, there's the public comment period where you can come up and address the council concerning any topic that you have.
Okay, so, here's...
Oh, good.
Here's what we, since it's proposing what's gonna be discussed in public hearing, not putting anything in motion, we're going to amend the local law to be full on sewer. So, paying a full sewer bill, whether it's a vacant building or a vacant unit. It's a starting point, we'll have feedback next meeting, and we're gonna do the water at half and half for each. So vacant buildings paid half, and the vacant units paid half. So it's a starting point, and then you can comment.
Right, and then at the public hearing, at the public hearing, then we can make that decision to go and change either the one or the other at that time, and then make the final resolution following.
Is this a recommendation for the hearing?
It's a starting point for the hearing.
Right, just a starting point for the hearing, just to get this movement to that point.
Okay. So, that's, do we have to do, do we have to make any, do we have to formally table these law and ordinance, or just keep them in Old Business?
Well, I mean, if it's going to change, then my recommendation would be to just withdraw those from consideration, and then we'll draft a new local law, draft a new ordinance, distribute it. No, yeah, we'll have to withdraw those too. Because you should have it, you should have the document in your possession, and have a document, and then advertise based upon what you have. I mean, I don't, in my opinion, to resolve the scheduled public hearing without having something in your possession to review is not the right thing, in my opinion.
That's what you're here for. Okay, so those are being both withdrawn and redrafted, and then, okay, we're good?
Yep.
All right? So, we'll get some more shout-outs. Anything else? Let's go to the new business.
All right. So in New Business, we have Ordinance Number 1989, an ordinance of the City of Waterfleet, New York, providing that the code of the City of Waterfleet be amended by revising Section 260-56, time limit parking or standing.
I'd like to make a motion to accept Ordinance Number 1989.
Yeah. So why don't we do this?
We're gonna change the number?
Yeah. So we're withdrawing it.
Okay.
We'll change the ordinance to the next number line to... Are we okay with that?
Okay, just to clarify, because we withdrew Ordinance Number 1988, that number will now be for this ordinance.
I'll second it.
You're seconding it? The new 1988?
1988.
You moved on 1988, got it? All right, discussion?
Oh, I'm sorry, we're talking about the sign ordinance.
Are you, are we keeping you off?
Just checking my case board. So this is a sign that was in front of the former Frank Ouse Salon, Hair Salon, down on 200 block of Third Avenue, which was there to benefit that business for customer parking. Where actually, that business is no longer there, it is now a residential building, so we're just removing that sign.
Good catch.
Okay, call roll?
Council Pat yourself?
In favor.
Council McGrady?
In favor.
Mayor Ma'am?
In favor.
Next, we have Ordinance Number 1989, an ordinance of the City of Waterfleet, New York, providing that the code of the City of Waterfleet be amended by revising Section 260-38, Schedule 2, speed limits.
Mayor, I'll make a motion if we move on this resolution.
Second.
All right, any discussion?
So this is signs that were posted for a school zone that used to be the former St. Bridget School, that is no longer there. Obviously, therefore, we no longer need those reduced speed limit signs referring to the school zone. A couple of school crossing signs and then speed limit signs that will be also removed from that area.
Stop signs are staying.
Stop signs, okay.
Straight forward, call roll?
Council Pat yourself?
In favor.
Council McGrady?
In favor.
Mayor Ma'am?
In favor.
Next, we have Resolution Number 9544. The Council of the City of Waterfleet hereby approves the Albany County Multi-Jurisdictional Multi-Hazard Mitigation Plan, and hereby adopts the Albany County Multi-Jurisdictional Multi-Hazard Mitigation Plan as the City of Waterfleet's Hazard Mitigation Plan.
I think they make a motion to accept Resolution Number 9544.
I'll second it. I'll second it, same faster.
Discussion?
So again, this is a, this is done by Albany County in conjunction with the 17 jurisdictions or municipalities within Albany County. It's a 199-page document. With this, the county has had multiple multi-jurisdictional meetings, we have attended those, I've been to several of those, the chiefs have accompanied me to those, a couple of those as well. The county's also held public hearings on this in regards to this update to the mitigation plan. To give an idea of what it is, obviously, it's mitigation, because we said that many times. The actions in there include preventions, property protection, public education, natural resource protection, emergency service coordination, and structural projects to maintain the stability of Albany County. The goals are to minimize injury, loss of life, minimize losses to the structures, protect natural resources such as open space, drinking water supplies, recreation areas, protect cultural resources, and provide continuity between the jurisdictions or municipalities for the government. By adopting this resolution and policy, the city is agreeing to reference and incorporate this document in future planning documents and in regulations as we move forward. It takes in a multitude of different types of hazards that could happen, whether it's large snowstorms, hurricanes, floods, tornadoes, anything that could possibly happen, even high winds. We can, this document can, is made available, and you can view it. It's a fantastic read, a lot of math, there's so much data in there, that's why I tried to kind of break it down into its finest points. There is a lot of data in there, and some of it's very interesting, that shows, you know, rural areas, census tracts, and what I think we most like to see in there, it really has to do with the floods and flood insurance, and you'll find in there that the City of Waterfleet has the highest rate of homes and buildings within the flood zone in the entire county. Colony has more, but I mean, you're talking about the size of Colony compared to the size of Waterfleet. So there's a lot in there. There's also grant opportunities when adopting this. Since you have this as your plan, you can go and get grants, and some of that has to do with flood management, so with everything that's been going on in the city, and we heard a lot of complaints about having to have the flood insurance, that would be the first thing that we'd be looking into with this. So, a very long, data-driven document, a lot of work has been done, this has been done over three years, maybe possibly even four years, includes a lot of work, and I recommend this to the council.
Anything else, sir? Call roll?
Council Pat yourself?
In favor.
Council McGrady?
In favor.
Mayor Ma'am?
In favor. Next two are going away, eh?
So we are withdrawing Resolution Number 9545 and 9546.
Which makes this one.
So as far as I know, that's all we have for New Business.
Do you need a resolution for authorizing the public hearing?
So since what you were gonna say, of course, we don't have the document with you now, we will wait till the next meeting to publish it, and we will provide the document. There's some more math that needs to be done because it affects the budget, and it fully affects the rate with each of those decisions. Sewer rate will be increased.
Appropriations and accounting?
Appropriations and accounting, we now have Resolution Number 9545. The Council of the City of Waterfleet hereby authorizes the increase of funds of certain expenditure accounts and certain revenue accounts in the annual estimate that has become necessary due to unforeseen circumstances.
Mayor, I'll make a motion that we move on this resolution.
Second.
Is it now 45?
Yeah.
Yeah, 45. These are, these are budget-neutral items, and what that means is there's increases in some accounts as we project our final numbers for 2018. The Finance Department has seen where there are some increases in expenses, but to offset those increases in expenses are areas where we found revenue increases or other expenditure areas where there's decreases from things that have happened throughout the year. This has been distributed to the council, and if you prefer any further details, I might provide you with the details, what these plans look like.
Can you give them? Yeah, we're looking to increase the, for one, the road salt budget, just due to the heavy winter we had, 17, 18, really. Increase in our workers' comp lines, which is pretty, which is being offset by some insurance recoveries we've gotten, so that's pretty much a wash, as though I think we're in or close to our budget expectations of our workers' comp. Those are being covered by both, an increase in the insurance recovery and we're increasing a federal aid, I'm sorry, yeah, federal aid line with funds that were from, still were received, I believe.
FEMA reimbursement money from 2017 that we received this year.
And in the water fund, we need to cover the sodium, I don't think I can just say...
Sodium per manganese.
There you go.
I got my own.
Which we're running on a whole budget on that, about 6,500. That's gonna be covered by the expected increase in revenue in the water visiting accounts, which is due basically to the water.
Again, all budget-neutral, doesn't hit any fund balance, they have offsets to be able to cover it.
Council Pat yourself?
In favor.
Council McGrady?
In favor.
Mayor Ma'am?
In favor.
So that's all we have in appropriations and accounting.
Okay. Want to public comment anything?
This time, the council has authorized a public comment period. If you wish to address the council, you may step forward, you have two minutes to address the council on any matters you wish. Council may respond to you or choose to at a later date. Anybody wants to come up? Come on up.
Lord, you bid 1500, 12th Ave., Waterfleet, New York. I'd like to start by thanking Chief Spain for addressing the microphones, they're not working. It'd be great if the participants turned them on, it'd be a good thing. Being that the council does not have to respond to questions, it seems as though I'd have to ask my questions to the general manager, I'd like to list the questions and have his response. Ongoing problem with the streetlights on Nineteenth Street, it's been three, four, five months going on. Manholes on Third Avenue, you said you were going to have them addressed, when do you think we should do that, January or February? Another question, is it acceptable to put blacktop on top of blacktop on the sidewalk? Is the adherence proper, is it acceptable? And also, you stated the gravel that was on Sixteenth Street was on private property, was not so, was on the 7th Street, other people have seen it and whatnot. So if you could address my issues, I would appreciate it.
I do, we'll thank Chief Spain for the microphones. Mine's not on, but I've been told in the past I don't need it. The streetlights, I'm assuming you're talking about some of them stay on during the day when the sun lights out?
They're very costly to the city. They're very costly to the city. Sun goes out and the lights... Half the lights are on, half are off.
Yeah, so certain times when it's overcast and so on, you can see that some of the lights are on. On a bright sunny day, they do shut off. They have been off because we've actually been out and looked at it. I was out there on the day when it was sunny, they're all off. The day when it's overcast or raining, certain ones are still back on. So as far as costly goes, it's not truly accurate. It actually costs more for us to fix them than it does for us to have the lights on. But that's not a reason to have them malfunctioning. So as we notice which lights are on during those days, we'll send the electrician back out to take care of them. He has taken care of six of them since your first comment about the lights. So it seems as though if they're different lights, it seems to be happening to all of them. If it's the same ones, if you could let me know that it's the same ones that were out before, then we may have to do something further with that.
This is going after...
The manholes on 3rd Avenue. When you had brought that up, I had stated that we would go out and inspect them, and if there was any changes that needed to be made, we'd make those changes. We determined that there are no changes that are going to be made to the manholes on 3rd Avenue. I'm not certain about the blacktop on blacktop on the sidewalks. I'll have to look into what it is that you were referencing there.
Mr. Yvonne, you were talking about the manhole that's by Ted's Fish Market.
Correct. General statement that he was going to take care of them. Now he says it's not necessary to take care of them. Which is it going to be?
Again, my... As I said, my statement was that we were going to go out and look at them, and if there was anything that needed to be done, we're going to take care of them.
So it's fine, everything's good.
Yes.
Is there a tolerance? Is there a tolerance level that they have to meet?
They have to be below grade so that they don't...
But a certain mouth below grade?
The manhole... The manhole should have been raised prior to blacktop. What's the sense of talking to this people? You know, they want to do the right thing. Let it be, I guess. You know, I guess I'm up here like a nitro. I don't make sense.
Mr. Yvonne, where is the spot on the sidewalk? What's the location referred to?
A home, there was a driveway put in, and it continued on top of the existing blacktop. Now, who knows if it was top coated or not? You're probably asking for the world, right? That would make it a little better, but really, I don't think it's acceptable to put blacktop on blacktop. Do you think someone would know?
We don't know, but who wants to go next? Come on. My time's up.
My time's up. Okay, get this guy out of here. How you doing?
Kathy Crudo, 1863, 9th Ave, Waterfleet. First of all, believe it or not, I got a lot of nice things to say for me, okay? First of all, kudos to Mark Spain and the police department. What a great job with Halloween. Just fabulous. Out walking the beat, seeing the kids, patrol officers giving kids candy. I put a remark up today, just... That makes such an impact on a child. A smile, a hello, a wave, piece of candy goes a long way. So thanks, you did a great job. And the trick-or-treaters that came to my house last night, there were a lot of big ones, and I have no problem with that. Polite, nice, fun. It was a really nice Halloween this year. It was not something to dread this year, and that was really, really good.
Did you say a smile?
Well, he's not going to smile, but some of the others might. Also, I wanted to say the bulk pickup went really well, at least up our way. I mean, you just saw stuff all over the city, and we came back home from babysitting, and it looked like nothing had ever happened. Our alley was spotless. They did a fabulous job cutting everything out of there. And again, thank you for looking into that water bill. I know it's our choice to no longer rent to tenants. We just... We're not getting... It wasn't a good living situation. But to be paying over $1,000 a year for water for two units when there's nobody up there, nobody's using them, and only two people downstairs, $1,600 a year for water is pretty outrageous. So thank you for looking into it, thank you.
Because I just want to comment on the bulk week since Chris Dawes isn't here, supervisor. Those guys work very hard. It's a very difficult job to do. And in bulk week, you see the piles that are out there. It's a monster job. Not only were they able to get it done, and they did use a third truck and take two labors from the highway department as well, but they were able to get it all done on time. Very little overtime on day one to make sure that we were ahead of the game. And by the time they got to Friday morning, all that was left was recycled in the 4th district where they picked it up. So they really did a phenomenal job. The guys on the back of the truck deserve a lot of credit for the amount of work that they put in for it. So thank you for recognizing that.
Paul Colette, 1812, 9th Ave, Waterfleet. And I just want to echo some of what Kathy Crudo said. First of all, Chief Spain, beautiful job by you and your staff. Can't thank you enough. We lived on 9th Ave since 1965, and usually we have problems over in the park. Things do get destroyed and like... This year, we had none of that, none. And at one point in time, when I was passing out candy, I actually counted the patrol car going by our home probably about nine times, and it really did make a difference. And we actually did run into Chief Spain ourselves. And for people who believe he doesn't smile, we actually have a picture he does. It's up there if anybody wants it. And also, thank you for the bulk week as well. It went very smoothly for us, and we do appreciate everyone's efforts. So we see things changing, especially community action police. I can't say enough, and we really appreciate it, thank you.
Good evening, everybody. Ralph Carr, I live on 16th Street. I'd just like to ask about these old business that we tabled against. I mean, what, second time, the sewer rents? Is that the second time to table? The council should just go ahead and pass this. The sewer rent for everybody, the possibility, as the chairman said, it's not just what you flush on your floor. If what runs off the roof, it's on the sewer system. I don't know if the residents realize that when the sewer leaves our state, it goes all over the county, and the city pays all over the county to treat them. Those rates go up, everything has to go up. The table this, and that's the back, and like, you know, another doctor just to pass it. You've got the ability to pass it, tonight you should pass it. That's part of it. And you talked about speed limit signs. I'd like to see the city consider lowering the speed limit in the entire city to 20 miles an hour. 30 miles an hour on side streets, former streets, way too fast for kids and pedestrians. If people are 25 miles an hour, we're right there. 30 miles an hour, it's too fast in the city. That's something we should consider. I know it'll be expensive, which is grand money for street signs, stop signs, and that's something I think we should consider. But you guys do a good job. It's not easy dealing with all of us, but we've got to do it. Thank you.
Chief Spain, 120 mile an hour speed limit. Has there been other cities that do that? Do you know?
I don't know, but to be honest with you, it's not something I've researched, but if you give us some time, we'll take a look at it and come back and give you a report on it.
Anyone else? No. Okay. Close all the comments, Mayor. Entertain the motion adjourned.
Mayor, I'll make the motion to adjourn.
Be second.
Call roll.
Mayor Man?
In favor.
Councilor Patrasell?
In favor.
Councilor McGrady?
In favor.
Please adjourn.